Good afternoon, welcome to the April 25th meeting of the BIMANCE Committee of the Georgetown Divide Pedantic Utility District. And I'll go ahead and call this meeting. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance here. Good afternoon, welcome to the April 25th meeting of the BIMANCE Committee of the Georgetown Divide Pedantic Utility District. Stand in one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Pledge of Allegiance here. Good afternoon, welcome to the April 25th meeting of the BIMANCE Committee. Very well, Elizabeth, you willing to do our roll call for us?
All right, Member Miller.
Here.
Secretary Hellick.
Here.
Vice Chair Gorance.
Here.
Chairman Fisher.
Present, here.
Liaison Stovall.
Present.
And Liaison McDonald. Okay, and he did let us know he would be absent, so.
Okay. All right, so that brings us to the adoption of today's agenda, as everybody had a chance to look over it. Anybody want to make a motion to adopt today's agenda?
I will make that motion to adopt today's agenda.
All right.
My second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
So, one thing since we have a...
Aye.
Oh, sorry, I should have told you this when we got here. Each vote we have to do by roll call since we have a teleconference. So, Member Miller.
Aye.
Secretary Hellick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gorance.
Aye.
And Chairman Fisher.
Aye. That brings us to public forum, and it looks like we have a couple of... Do we have any public comments today? I see a hand up. Is that Cherie? Well, go ahead and go to Cherie, since I see your hand up, and we'll come right back to you, Steve.
Okay.
You're a little quiet, but go ahead, I think we can hear you.
Okay, there's so much feedback right now. Okay, can you hear all that feedback?
No, we're just hearing you normally.
Hello?
We're just hearing you normally, Cherie.
Okay, on my phone, on my phone call.
Hmm.
Okay, well, I'm gonna redial again.
Okay.
Okay. Why don't we move to our in-person public comment, then?
I got a comment for Nicholas. Nicholas, is that company down there that popped our pipe down there, they gonna pay for that?
Let's talk offline.
Oh, thanks.
All right, so, Cherie will have an opportunity to call back in. I'll close public comment for now, I'll open it up again at the very end of the meeting if she has anything that she wants to add, and I'll let her know that when she gets back on. So, for that, I think we close this public comment, let's move on to item number four, approval of minutes. Everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from the March 28 meeting? And if so, I'll hear, there are no changes. Motion to adopt those minutes?
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes.
My second.
All right, motion and a second, and let's have a roll call.
All right, Member Miller.
Aye.
Secretary Hellick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gorance.
Aye.
And Chairman Fisher.
Aye. All right, that brings us to informational items, financial reports. If any of you see Cherie, get back on if you let me know, and I'll let her know.
And Chairman Fisher, I just wanted to make a note that we did include this year's audit in the financial reports. This came in earlier this week. We were not able to update the agenda to reflect any sort of approval or any process along those lines, but we did want the Finance Committee to have a full review of that audit. I'm not sure yet if this will go into the board at the next board meeting in May, but we are making sure that we bring it here to this committee for their valued input prior to the board if they decide to hear it on May.
Okay.
I do see Cherie back online, and I do see her hand raised, if you want to recognize.
All right. Cherie, we did close public comment, and I said that I would open it up again for public comment, but we are on item number five, financial reports. And Mr. General Manager, do you want to repeat that again about the audit?
Oh, yeah, Cherie, I'm not sure where you popped in in that. I just wanted to make a note for all in the room and online.
Any better on the feedback? They're still giving you trouble. Uh-oh.
Okay, can I?
Boy, Cherie, you're cutting out completely there.
Okay, the phone, the phone isn't working.
All right. I'm not sure if you have any other options.
Well, I am...
She's gonna have to come in.
Yeah.
She can do the video, can't she? The Zoom?
Yeah, unfortunately, I think at this point, with that kind of connectivity, we're gonna have to move on. Like I said, we'll open up any public comment at the end and do our best to recap, and then this will be recorded, but I think we do need to move on for now. Sorry about that. Let's go into financial reports, anything else?
Sure, I will open it up to the committee for any questions on the financial reports and/or the audit. And I will give a little bit more about the audit, I was kind of getting there. So, the audit came in with no findings. I will give Jessica and her team, as well as the other managers around the office, a huge set of kudos. They really knocked it out of the park. And last year, we had a small organizational change that they asked us to do, a small internal control change, and that came back that we made that change, and they were very much in favor of that change, and we had no GASB complaints, we had no other, nothing. It was a very clean audit.
Outstanding. Any questions from the committee, any comments? Mr. Gorance, I don't want to leave you out up there, I'll make sure you're... Anything on your part? Not hearing anything. So, this will be available in what, how would the public get this if they want to see it?
So, we will post it on our Facebook, or excuse me, on our website, excuse me. It's posted under our financial section of our website. We have a whole report section if anybody wants to review it, and it will also be heard and accepted at either the May board meeting or the June board meeting. Again, I'm just waiting for confirmation from some board members to hear when they want to address this.
Okay.
Oh, also, I didn't even realize, I forgot that I got included as well, the quarterly investment report did get put in as well. We, it shows our cash position in our quarterly investments, in our full investments, and we have, actually, one of our CDs is maturing, and we are going to be switching that into a treasury, so that, we'll be working on that, and that matured 29, what is today, the 25th, so we have a couple more days, and we're gonna be rotating into something else long-term.
What's the term of that treasury?
It'll be 29, 2029.
Okay.
And the reason we're doing that is because long-term rates are more favorable now with the interest rates going up again.
All right. Any public comments on the financial reports, including, I don't know if the public's got a chance to review the audit? Sounds like it just got in here now, it'd be good to bring it back to our, to our May meeting as well.
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Very good.
Yeah. Just a curiosity question, right? I've played with enough budgets in my life to know that sometimes you're way over, and sometimes you're way under, and if you balance out at the end of the year, you're okay.
Yep.
But I've noticed that there's, particularly in the 5600, there's significant things that are low, but they're not significant amounts, but the percentages are down. Technically, we should be, you know, if everything was perfect, we'd be at 25% on the report.
Theoretically, yes, there are some categories that do fluctuate, and so, we can go through that whole presentation, line by line, and if you have any flagged, then we can go over those. And I know we've taken some of what we learned in last year's budget, and we're reducing certain areas in this year's budget. That's, we actually as staff, had a meeting earlier this week to go over and finalize the presentation, and I know there's like overtime in some areas, or we're just not using as much as we thought we might use, and so, we're actually bringing those back to earth, and bringing those back to that 25% range where we should be now.
So, yeah, my only question was, was there anything in particular, particularly in the 5600, that concerned you? Because like I said, a lot of them were $1,000, $1,800 for the first three quarters, so that's, like I said, I don't regard that as significant, but there's some that, you know, the percentages are, I don't know...
Let me pull it up, I'm gonna look at it.
Grab one, I mean, looking at a thing like bank charges, it's, you know...
To be honest with the new, with the new investments that we're doing, we're getting a few more bank charges here and there, and it has to do with having another bank account. And we're doing a little bit more wire transferring, and it's these small, you know, $20, $30 wire transfer charges that we didn't previously budget for, so, yeah, we're over budgeted in some of those areas, but it's not a dollar, a large dollar amount.
No, and all of the US bank, the safekeeping account and the investment account, any service fees, that all goes under bank charges. So, any account management fees, service fees, transaction fees, that all goes to the 5600 bank fees.
And so, we opened up two whole, you know, two new bank accounts, basically, so we're getting extra fees because of that.
Yeah.
And so, that wasn't originally, I think originally, we had budgeted $500, and you know, we're at like $1,200 for the, that's for the year, so that's, you know, it's not a significant dollar amount.
Yeah, so, but it was way under 25%, but there are things that we probably already paid up for the year, so it'll balance out as we go to the end of the year.
Correct.
So, that was just a curiosity question, if there was any particular thing in there that gave you concern, because I said, when I looked at things, that the percentages were low or that, and then I looked at the amount, I thought, pocket change, it's not really a big deal.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Chairman, I know we're getting a little ahead of ourselves, and we're kind of into the budget discussion, if you want to open that up, then you're welcome to do that, and I can address that question. The only things that I'm seeing that are of concern is utility charges, because those are going up considerably, and labor is also rising. We tried really, really hard to tighten the purse strings on the materials and supplies, and if you look in most areas, even with high utility rates, we're going down in most of those areas, so, you know, the areas we're going up is labor charges, and that's, you know, health insurance, salaries. We did factor in MOU updates for both inside and outside staff, so those labor charges also include a new five-year contract for the labor. And then, if you look at anything that has to do with PG&E, I mean, it's 20% across the board increase for PG&E.
Any, is there anything else? I don't think anything else in particular to the financial reports, and then we'll move on. I don't see anything, so we'll close out item number five, move on to action items with the 24-25 budget. Just to follow up on what you started with a minute ago, do you have a, have the MOUs been finalized?
We have one that has been approved by the board, and one is still outstanding at the moment.
Okay, so you're modeling based on best estimate for now, subject to finalization at some point?
Sort of tentative agreements that have been in place for the other union. Nothing has been signed off or finalized by our board or the union, but it's, we're just trying to play it conservative and make sure that we don't not include those. We don't have to do a budget amendment later to include those amounts later. It's easier to go backwards than it is to go forwards.
Okay, very good. Then I'll turn to item number six, just as a whole, A and B, you can kind of roll from one to the other.
Excellent, yeah, yeah, A and B are gonna be the same, and I will let Jessica do a little bit of the presenting on what has changed. This is her baby right now, so I'm going to let her go over what has changed since the last time we spoke and today, and then, there is a couple things on the CIP that we really tightened up and cleaned up, and we added a few things to, and we also will reflect the grant, the grants that we either have outstanding or that we have submitted, so I wanted to go over all that.
Well, introduce us to your babies.
It's not just mine. It was 5100.
Hold on one second, sorry.
You should try to pull up the presentation.
We have a bit of a lag messing with us.
It's fine. So, I just wanted to preface that they did approve the MOU contract for Local 39, which is the outside staff. So, those salary increases and adjustments are already present. However, for Local 1, some of the administrative staff, including, you know, some of the management, work in those other departments other than 5600, because they manage them, but also, like, the admin staff also work on irrigation, meter reading, customer service, well, customer service, no, 5600, but, so, there's been a formula this entire time that spreads out the percentages of their time and labor into those different funds, so if you notice, even though, I don't know when the MOU got processed.
We're...
Okay, so those numbers were already in budget?
Yeah, the original 39, yes, was already included. We added the Local 1 numbers, so it mostly reflected in 5600.
Yeah, but the administrative aides, all, they have percentages, about 5% in each group, including Zone.
And if I can just add one thing, I don't mean to cut you off, I just want to preface one thing, the CPI actually came in slightly under what we estimated, so, I mean, it won't be super noticeable, but we estimated 4% of a COLA, and we're at about 3.8%, so, a little bit less there, so go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to preface because I did notice that the salaries and, what is it, payroll taxes, workers' comp, retirement expense, all went up with this Local 1 proposed MOU adjustments, so you'll notice that those did go up in 5100, 5200, 5300, 5400, and 6100, and that's because they work in those departments as well, small portion of all of them, 5100.
Okay.
And there's just been some minor changes, there's been some capital expenses that were removed, and then we did add a new trap barrel to 5100. And that's pretty much it for 51. 52, same thing with the salaries. I didn't know how much it went up, but it's not much. And also, I noticed that software and licenses for 5200, the formula was broken, so the $150 wasn't showing on the last budget slide, so that is now showing. And then, same thing with capital expenses, we removed some items that will end up, that were small-ticket items we'll end up purchasing this fiscal year. And then, 5300, same thing with the salaries, we did add water quality centers, and then the Hydrant Buddy, which we're trying to get a JPIA grant for.
So, there's a risk control grant that we can get through JPIA that will pay for the two Hydrant Buddies, and then basically, a Hydrant Buddy is a valid exerciser, and so, it's a, it's a high workers' comp injury item, turning and twisting and doing all that, and so, what this does is it's a machine that, we have to exercise valves every year, and so, we go to all the valves, and we have to turn on, turn off, to make sure they're not frozen, and so, this machine gets put onto the valve, and it, you know, does it like this, and it turns it, and does all the exercising, and makes sure all the seals are good and stuff, so this will help reduce, hopefully, workers' comp injuries in the future.
And then, for 5400, actually, salaries went down 5%. And, oh, so the other thing I did is we have two current vacancies, and the formulas for their salaries were, because I get very detailed, so I know when their anniversary dates, and they get their step increases, so I only budget their old salary for that amount of months, and then their new salary for the remaining, so I get a better idea of what the total yearly salaries will be for the fiscal year. So, I took the, the two vacancies, still had the prior personnel's anniversary timeframe formulas in there, so I changed it to be like pretty much 11 months and one month, so it would be their newest salary, whoever gets hired is gonna start at that salary, and they're gonna stay in it until next fiscal year, so that lowered this budget by a little bit, because if they get hired soon, they're not gonna have really a step increase next year. Until now, so it'll only be two months. So, that changed. There's one addition to capital expenses, and then we did remove a small-ticket item that we'll probably purchase this year. And then, 5600, you'll see it at an increase because of the MOU negotiations.
And salaries and anything else?
All the stuff that goes with salaries, so all the payroll taxes depend on the salary amount, whatever you're paying, it's just a straight percentage. Same thing with workers' comp, it's a formula based on the current, it's, we pay that quarterly, and that's based on what was paid to the staff in that quarter, so if there's a lot of overtime, that will go up during that quarter, because the workman's comp is based on salaries paid, and we pay it quarterly. And then, per's retirement is the same, it's a percentage of the salary, so all of those go up. If salaries go up, all of those items will go up a little bit. We raised deferred comp to match the correct percentage of the GM salary, not by much, $275. And then, going below, we lowered building maintenance a little bit, we do know that there's certain things that need to get done, and it'll probably happen next year, so we're keeping money in their account for that. We didn't have the cost of service analysis amount in there, we had it budgeted for last year, but since most of their costs and invoices are gonna be paid close to next, in the next, I mean, I don't know exactly when they're gonna bill us, but I put it in next fiscal year.
Okay.
So, that increased professional services $50,000. And then...
Could you say that again, because that was my question, how come there's a change that the billing for workers' comp is gonna flip fiscal year?
Workers' comp is dependent on what is paid in salaries, so if the MOU negotiation is increasing the salaries, it trickles down.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we don't have overtime in admin, but you'll see in, if workers' comp, you'll see in the budget to actuals, in the other funds, especially during irrigation season when we have more people on call, where if there's a big break and there's a lot of overtime, the workman's comp goes up, because it's dependent on what we actually pay the staff.
Thank you.
And we took $6,000 out of staff development, and we added education. So, there's a lot of things that are dependent on the MOU, but we're gonna budget for them regardless, because if they don't happen, then we just have more budget. But one of the things is tuition reimbursements, that added to staff development. We added the Georgetown Fire Assessment District taxes, because that's a new tax now we have to pay. And the cost of service analysis is a big one.
Is that tax paid per parcel that you own, or how is that?
Yeah, we get like a bill that's six pages long.
Okay. How many parcels do you own, just roughly?
I think they count all of our Eastments.
Wow.
Yeah, it's considerable.
We probably have like 50, 60.
We can answer that question.
Okay.
That's a little bit of research.
Bring that on, you, that's a curious, curious question.
Off the top of your head, like, it's like 3,000 divided by 18, because there is $18 per parcel.
Okay.
I think we paid them free 29 something.
Good investment, or it's cost, another cost.
We, for memberships and subscriptions, we removed the CRWA membership.
Yes.
That was $1,500. And that's pretty much it, the only thing that changed down there. Zone, there was a couple things that we moved over to CIP, and some of the MOU updates have affected the top portion, salaries and health and all that. And then, we added, can stop saying, in the capital expenses.
We removed a couple things out of capital expenses that were large ticket items that we moved to the CIP, the water trailer, and we moved a...
Geo pump.
We were renting a pump that we use quarterly, and I think it's might be beneficial to the district just to buy one, so we have it.
Do you use it for more than just the zone?
Just, it's only can be used for zone, because it would be contaminated. It's a, it's a pump that we use to pump wells for groundwater analysis.
And then, we're on the CIP.
Yeah, so CIP is, now...
Before we, before we go into CIP, I do see a hand up, so let's see if we've got some comments on the base budget, the expense report we just heard about proposed for 24. We have three back, maybe with a good connection.
Yeah, finally.
There you go.
15 minutes of hearing five different people speak, and I even tried Zoom, and the same thing was happening.
Well, welcome back.
It was like constant feedback. Okay, but I have a question on the audit that I didn't get to ask.
I'm gonna reopen.
Connection from.
Let me, let's stay with item six for now, and then I mentioned, as you were kind of going out, that I'd reopen public comment at the end, so we'll do a catch-all for you at the end, so, anything on the proposed budget?
Well, my basic, yeah, where is the expense and revenue summary pages? They were in the budget preview at the board meeting last month, and they're not in this one.
I was gonna ask that, too.
Those weren't in the presentation, those were paper, we handed those ours as supplemental.
Yeah, we, sorry about that, it's the same as last time, we haven't updated any of those, so that's, that's an oversight on our part, I apologize.
Well, you actually had it in the PowerPoint at the board meeting.
Yeah, no, I...
So, it wasn't supplemental.
Yeah, it's available.
Okay, so is it on the web, so where do I access the, are they on the website now? Because I'm not able to access them in person?
Yes, we will make sure that they're accessible after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, well, that isn't helpful for the meeting. All right, and then I have a question when you get back to the audit.
Well, I mean, on that, I was gonna, okay, and we will, we'll come back to the audit, but I did want to follow up on your question.
That's fine.
Just on the revenue side, can you speak to how the revenue matches up with the proposed expenses that we made?
The revenue, yeah, our revenue is more than the expenses that we have laid out currently, it is less than I would like it to be, but it is, we are in the, in the green, if that answers that.
Okay.
I, it's an oversight, we can get you that sheet, and it is online, we had it at the last board meeting, so it would be the same as what was at the last board meeting.
Okay.
Now, with the new changes, we may have a few changes, which, I apologize that we will include that.
Okay, yeah, for the May meeting, we can get the rolled up both, yeah, good point on the expense rolled up and revenue, appreciate it.
Happy to do that.
Okay, let's roll into capital budget.
Yeah, moving into CIP, I moved a few things around, so we had, I'm trying to remember what I did here, so, we moved, we reduced a little bit of money in vehicle replacements and pushed some of those out, we've gotten quite a few new pieces of equipment, larger, of a larger variety. We do have to replace a few of our smaller vehicles, some of the service trucks that, you know, the utility trucks that we have that go to the wastewater, excuse me, not wastewater, the water treatment plants, so those, those are a little bit less onerous, I didn't reduce it by very much, about $25,000, so, just wanted to make sure that we had a little bit of a buffer there. Also, moved some SCADA upgrades that we had planned in Priority 3 from the beginning of '24 to beginning, beginning of '25. And then, did you have a question?
Can you remind me what SCADA is?
Yeah, supervisory control and data acquisition. It's basically us being able to toggle switches and push buttons from afar.
Okay, so remote access.
It is, yeah.
It's more like kind of tracks.
Yeah, it's, it's, um...
Tracks all the parameters from the treatment.
You'll see, you'll see, when you go to the treatment plant, we'll show you what it does, you can see gauges... You'll see, you'll see, when you go to the treatment plant, we'll show you what it does. It, you can see gauges. And you can see basically like, like your car dashboard on a computer, and it would be like everything that's happening at. A facility, how high the tank is, how much water is being produced, how much pressure is here. And so then you can actually do all the same things, remote access, that you should be able to do sitting right in front of the machines. And so, um, we're trying to make it a little bit more accessible around, so that the guys, if they have a small alarm. They can just kind of check stuff. Okay, we're good, we're within range, but we are getting an alarm. And then, um, but that's something we're trying to move kind of further down the line, because we have. We have a lot going on right now with some of the grants and some of the fire mitigation that we're still trying to do, and, and I don't foresee us getting to it until a couple of years down the road. Under, uh, CIP for the zone, uh, we did add in, um, the geo pump. We added in the water tank trailer, and we changed it from a backhoe to a backhoe attachment. Or we've also looked at maybe getting a, a used mini excavator, if we can, if we can find one that has low hours. Because I feel like it might be more advantageous for them to have in CDS as opposed to this attachment. I would say the biggest thing we did, if, if you go to the next slide, please, is we organized a little bit better the grants tab. For the CIP, so basically everything in the top half. Um, up until where it would say canal improvements, upper canal pipeline project. Everything above that, we've received, so, or have been awarded those, those dollars. The other ones, we are either hoping to be awarded them, or we are, um. Proposing a grant that we are going after. So basically, we've received the annual canal lining money from the USBR. That is something we, we are working on currently. We are, we basically just got approval to do the work. Unfortunately, because of irrigation season starting, we won't be able to do the work until at the end of irrigation season. It's. Um, just on the other side of where the tunnel comes out of the hydro, we're gonna be. Uh, lining about fifteen hundred feet of canal. The next one down is dredging, and so there is, uh, it says five million dollars to dredge. This is for Walton at the current moment. We have received money, or a promise of money from FEMA in the amount of about one and a half million. And then we have, um, some other monies that are coming as a result of the, the fire and mitigation. We're going to use to offset the cost there. I don't know how much we're going to receive, so I can't add that just yet. Uh, AMI meter installation, that is the money that we received from Senator Avrato Gill. So we've spent the first portion of that in this fiscal year on the generators. And we actually may be offsetting some of that in this fiscal year, because we've already received some of the AMI pieces. I just don't know if we've received all of them yet, so that may, that may be updated before the end of this fiscal year. Moving down to the clearing contract, this is the portion of the, uh, califier contract. That has to do with a forester and a forestry company coming in to do some massive clearing. Um, as also as a result of that, that grant, we received the excavator and the skin steer. So those have already been purchased, so those have been moved out of going into next fiscal year, and those have been purchased in this fiscal year. Then moving down, we have the Sweetwater Treatment Plant Water Tank. We just received finalization, I believe, maybe three weeks ago, that the Senate, uh, voted on this. And the president signed the appropriation for that, so that money is now promised to us. We don't have to work with EPA. And, uh, some, some other, uh, just, uh, excuse me, agencies within Washington to, uh. Write, we don't have to write a grant so much as we write a project description and we write some, you know. How we're gonna spend the money, process, schedule, stuff like that. So we're starting to work on that project now. Now, the next two, um, you have Upper Canal Pipeline Project and you have Canal Pipeline Improvement. The first one is a USDA, uh, grant that we have that is currently in review. Um, for approximately eight-point-eight million and some change. I rounded it nicely up to eight-point-nine million dollar, eight-point-nine, yeah, eight-point-nine million dollars. Because it's really close to that, and I just figured for accounting purposes, it would be easier. Um, so that is a fully funded grant. If we receive it, it would, uh, have no match to the district. So we would be able to pipeline, I don't give you the distance, like one-point-seven-five miles or so.
Yeah, it's about eight thousand, eight thousand two hundred feet or so.
So it's a considerable portion of the upper canal that, that was severely affected by the fire. So we're trying to mitigate erosion and other inundation up there. It would basically, um, allow us to not have to really. Hate to say it this way, but we wouldn't have to worry as much about that section. Obviously, we still worry about it, but it would, it would be. A little bit less onerous as having to clean it out all the time.
Buried is lower risk by nature, I imagine.
One hundred percent. Secondly, is that, the other one is another grant that's being given through, uh. FEMA or KELOES, and it's kind of a, a, a combination grant. That one, we're still waiting to hear back on, and that one is, um, approximately three million dollars in grant money. And about nine hundred thousand in in-kind services and, and funding from ourselves. So that one, we have not received yet. It is, it is in review. We've been told that, that. We've been told that it's a hurry-up-and-wait type of situation. Um, we were told originally eighteen months. That we, when we originally applied, I think we're right about ten, eleven months now.
Oh, no, we're, yeah, we passed, we applied in, uh, uh, January two thousand twenty-three, so we're, we're around fifteen months.
Fifteen months, so three more months and then we, we should know. Nothing, I'm sure. But we keep getting notices, and we have to apply for some more stuff and turn in some more paperwork, so. It's gonna come, hopefully, one of these days. There wasn't a lot of money that was requested out of the pot for that, so we have, I have good inclination that we may get it. Cause it was, when they do these, these grants, they only open it up to certain agencies. And it's the agencies that were affected, and, and I think there's only six agencies that it could have applied for the pot of money that we had. And we were the most affected of any of the six agencies by this emergency, so hopefully, that helps. Uh, so the next one down is, um, we've spoken about this in the past. We have a, a water right on Onion Creek. And it was original diversion to the district back in, uh, you know, the gold rush days. And it is now. The diversion was destroyed during the King Fire. It is, it is in the King Fire scar. So we are trying to rehabilitate that diversion and bring it back into the back end of Stumpy. It's. Anywhere between four thousand and five thousand acre feet of water that we can access. And we have asked Senator Avrato Gill again for a state, uh, state appropriation to help with the mitigation and the, and the reinstatement of that. Uh, water right. The next one down is, we have asked both Senator Padilla, Senator Butler, and Congressman Kylie. To help us build a hydroelectric generator at the bottom end of Stumpy, at the Edson Dam on Stumpy, and that would help to, um. Bring in some revenue, offset some of the costs of the district. And, um, provide a safer, more reliable power source for the, the, uh, the district customers. And it would also help those outside of the district, so we've asked them for five million dollars to help offset that cost. The next two down are.
Is that the one you have shown here, it's two-point-six-seven, and then four, where am I seeing?
Oh, no, no, it's right above that.
Oh, there's five, sorry, okay, okay, sorry.
So the next two down are, uh, solar at Walton. Well, I guess it's solar, we're, right now, we're looking at Sweetwater, uh, solar and batteries. So we've identified a grant program that would pay for approximately two-thirds of a four-million-dollar project. So we would, um, if we were to obtain this grant, we would get approximately two-point-six-seven million dollars. Back, and we would have to take out either a loan or pay one-point-three million dollars of that to, uh, build this. The reason I say a loan is we can take the money, we are currently paying to PG&E. And we can offset those costs and we would be, our, our ROI, if we were able to put the batteries in, would be. Much faster on this loan program. It would, it would actually. Probably be about five to six years ROI. Without the batteries, it's more like ten to eleven years, um, on having this program, so. We're hoping to, to take advantage, the, the grant has a few pitfalls in it, so we're trying to figure out how realistic it is. And if you look down right below, that it does have the PPP loan, that's a, a private. I'm sorry, public-private partnership loan, and so though, we are working currently with a, a group called the Oppenheimer Group. And they've been helping us with interest rates and, you know, analyzing the market. And this has been something we've been just trying to assess the right time to do this.
Yes, sir. Are there tax write-offs related to that?
There is.
Beneficial to a public agency as opposed, I mean, a private funder as opposed to a public agency that doesn't pay taxes?
So there's actually, um, there's actually a benefit. You say tax write-offs, and I'm gonna say, sort of, kind of, we would actually get a benefit, we would get a benefit, we would get, we don't pay taxes. But we would get a credit back from the federal government to do this. So we would get the linked grant and we would get a credit back by doing this project.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so the tax credit could go to us theoretically. It's not a tax credit as much it is as a.
It's a subsidy, I guess you'd call it.
It's a, it is a subsidy. It's a renewable energy credit that we would get as part of this, and it would help our loan terms, and it would help pay off some of that loan. And then the last one is, uh, develop a water source on Otter Creek. So this is another one of our, um, our water rights. It's below Stumpy. And the, the diversion is still in existence, it just needs to have some repair work done on it. So we are, I think we started working on this this year, at least doing some of the environmental on it.
Yeah, it's kind of infancy.
Yeah, so we're just anticipating having this coming. Adam knows a little bit more about it. You wanna just, what's the water rate on it about?
I got, I can't, I'm, I'm in, I can't remember. It's, it's a ben, it's a beneficial water, right, because it's, um, it's a, it's like a side wire diversion instead of our main stuff. Because we're done with supply, it helps us get the season started. Um, you know, we can, you know, keep more water in Stumpy, so it's, it's, it's pretty.
And then something we didn't do last year that we added in is, is CIP grants funding for zone. We have identified a, a lift station upgrade that we need to do as part of the, the zone, um, work. This is just kind of an overdue upgrade that needs to be done. There are some grants that are out there. And so Alexis has been working with our grant writers to find some, some funding to help with that. And then I have kind of into the future, a wastewater treatment plant that may be something we wanna pursue. That would help, um, offset some of the water costs going to the golf course at Auburn Lake Trails. And they would still have to pay for the water, but they wouldn't be using treated water, so there would be a lot less restrictions on the water. Um, it'd be kind of putting a waste product to a beneficial use, and it would save some of the, uh, water that we have as treated water. That could go to other customers, and it would, it would help with water conservation, so. A lot of the state is, you know, encouraging those types of projects, so we might be able to find a grant for that. I haven't identified anything, and honestly, it's, it's a, it's a long-term down the line, but it is something that we are identifying as a potential need in the future. And then future capital improvement projects, we still have the North River Pumping Plant. So, uh, we're also calling this, um, you know, with the Onion Creek Reservoir, we have a potential secondary reservoir. That we are going to be doing hydroelectric, which we're, you know, that's kind of future, but we're now asking for this federal appropriation. We still have, uh, the ability to connect into Loon Lake potentially, and line extensions, which would be extending the. Uh, the district into areas where, so we're, we're having people who, you know, if their wells go dry, we can still, you know, annex them into the district. And there has been in the past, uh, you know, the talks of development up here, so these are just things that we are taking into consideration of expanding the size of the district. And that is, uh. All the CIP, unless I missed anything. Did I miss any changes in the CIP?
Any committee comments or questions on the CIP budget?
Just, I have one. For the dredging of holding reservoirs and erosion. So we have a, a net cost of four million there, and you said that that would likely be reimbursed by the fire. Additional fire grants. Do you feel good about, I mean, that that whole amount will come back? Or will that be a net cost to us somewhere? Oh, why are you laughing?
I had to tread lightly. There, there is a funding mechanism that we have lined up for this.
Okay, cause that's a. And then the, the other question I had was the Sweetwater Treatment Plant, so there's, looks like there's a five-hundred-thousand. Net cost to us, so that comes out of GP PUD, or how does that?
So we can apply for state grants to offset that. Which is probably what we'll try to do, is find some state money to, uh, offset that. And, and the reason we have the one-point-seven-five, uh, million is. However large we scale the tank is how much extra we have, so. We have the one-point-two-five that has been promised to us. Now, the footprint of where we're putting this tank, we're trying to put in a two-million-gallon tank. We just may not be able to, because it just may not physically be able, a big enough spot to put that in there. So we may have to size down, and that project cost may go down as well, and so we're not sure how much that will be. We're still kind of working on preliminary estimates.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make sure you don't forget Mr. Gorance up there. He doesn't have his hand raised or anything, but before you, uh. As studiously looking everybody around here. All right, I better get back to my duty here. Let me, uh, go ahead and open it up to the public, Steve.
Now, the dredging at the Walton Lake, would that be the, the silk coming in from the fire damage?
Yes, sir.
There's a ton of that coming in, huh, a lot?
Yes.
And how about, uh, the hydroelectric at Stumpy Meadows? Um, have you figured out how much power that will produce?
So we do have some preliminary estimates of about a. About five to ten megawatts, maybe. We're not sure yet how big we can go. We're just working on some kind of back-of-the-napkin calculations, um, from our engineer.
And then that's gonna take lots of, uh, uh, line going from Stumpy to.
Quintet, yeah. It's about four, it's about four miles or something, yeah.
Power poles and stuff.
Well, it's, yeah, so it, the, the cost on that is, the generator is, is relatively cheap. It's funny, the, the, yeah, the generator part is actually the cheap part, it's the power just transmission lines. So if we did underground, the transmission lines, that's where the five-to-six-million-dollar project comes in. If we do overhead, it's, it's considerably less than that, and so. You know, that's something that we would have to assess with PG&E as to how they wanna connect into the system. Because they're doing all the underground stuff, but not everywhere.
Have anybody online? Mr. Gorance, you've been kind of quiet there for a while. Any comments?
No, I just, that last comment piqued my interest a little bit. I mean, I'm just moving to underground. If they go, I guess PG&E would then be liable for any type of fire damage potentially, if there's something that happens at our generation. Do we have any say on what they do?
We're in the very preliminary talks of that.
Okay, it just piqued my interest. Unfortunately.
And I see Cherie has, I mean, uh. Cherie, you wanna, you have a comment? Do you wanna unmute?
Um, no, not on the CIP, just for the audit.
Coming up. All right. Anything else on action items? There are action items. Are we at a point yet? Where you need us to make a recommendation, or can we still have one more stab at it in May with, uh? I mean, I, I, to me, I think you're dialing it pretty close. I'd, I'd like to see the whole package together if we have the time with the, with the revenue side and things too, can package that.
Yeah, I think we can do one more. I have received a few board members who wanna maybe push this to June, which I think is reasonable. Um, so I would say you're gonna have one more chance to look at it in May.
Okay. And that'd be my recommendation, is to push our recommendation to May then, we have that to work with. All right?
I agree.
Okay. Uh, on to item number seven, finance committee member, uh, committee comments and reports. Any other, any committee members have anything to report on? Seeing none. Moving on to number eight, agenda items for the next finance committee meeting. Anything to discuss? We will be taking the, the, kind of the final, rolled up, final look. We will be taking the, the, kind of the final, rolled up, final look at the budget next time, right?
Yes.
And we had talked about, now I'm losing my memory, I always do on the stand. But we talked about kind of using this finance committee as an education forum. We're going to bring forward some items just of common interest. Just take 10 minutes here and there to talk about areas of, and it could be PERS, how it would be retirement, upcoming, you know, focus on a project, just general interest. So anybody asking those questions at the counter, you could say, glad you asked. It's right there, go to the recording, that kind of thing. So happy to see those things coming forward as you're prepared for them. And.
I just made a note, we're going to add some information on some of those grants as we come forward. And I think that's important for this committee also to, to kind of weigh in and at least have that when we're having grants, when we're going for grants, what we've received for grant stuff like that, so I think that's important.
I have the audit and the revenue and expense slides request.
And then I think, are you going to open it back up for the question?
I am indeed, thank you for the reminder. So with no other agenda item comments from the committee. Cherie, let me give you the floor once more and I'll let you kind of open it up for anything that you missed when you were having bad reception there.
Okay, well, I don't know what I really missed, but, you know, the items. 5A on the second paragraph, on page five, it says total expenses were 4.3 million, a decrease of 3.7 or 46%. Why was that such a lark?
Hold on. You said page five, say that again?
Page five, you said, Cherie?
Okay, now the phone's doing feedback again.
Uh-uh. So under financial highlights, second paragraph on page five, total expenses were 4.3, a decrease of 3.7 or 46.57% from the previous fiscal year.
I think two of the main factors was the implementation of GASB, was it 75? So we had to add 2.8 million dollars to the operating budget, but then that was also, that was also the year of the mosquito fire. So we had tremendous operating expenses that year. So last year, even though we had cleanup and continuous, what's the word, Nick? For the.
Overtime.
Oh, mitigation.
Mitigation, mosquito fire mitigation costs. It was a lot less than the initial cleanup.
Okay.
So last, this last, because we're looking at the end of fiscal year '23. So it.
How, how new is what page we're looking at here?
I think we're on page five of the financial.
Yeah, that's not anything that I see that's remotely.
She was asking about.
I'm reading it here.
The expenses decreased by $3 million.
So the page five is the management discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And under financial highlights, that paragraph, it says total expenses were 4.3 million, a decrease of 3.7 million.
Hold on, let me, let me get there.
We are answering your question, I think, Cherie. You may, if you're not getting good reception, need to go back and listen to the recording, but we are doing our best to answer you here.
She has a minute left, if she has other.
She says the phone isn't working now.
Okay, well.
Oh, she can't hear, okay.
There'll be a recording for her, we'll still do our best.
You can relay the information.
I'm the middle man.
Oh, I know why it says that. It's because of the OPEB thing. If you look at the total.
And that's what you were talking about, the requirement, the GASB requirement.
Yeah, the OPEB liability, we had to add that to our operating expenses.
So it's, it's basically our, our retirement liabilities that we had to add as a one-time, you know, here's your major expense that you have to spend into this. And then you, you kind of accrue it now more gradually.
Okay.
So that's, that's why that looks like.
That's a good question. I was getting a pretty big swing.
I couldn't even find it in the book.
Is 75 and OPEB like the same?
Yes, I think it's all the same.
Same report. So it is in there now, like if you look at the budget, the budget slides, and you go through, I have added what the actuals are for this year because of the end of the budget, it gave us the amount. And it went down significantly because when you first reported, you're reporting the entire of every, all the retirees and what we pay, what their life expectancy, through the end of their life expectancy. And then if every single employee here worked here 20 years and retired with whatever CalPERS tier they're in pension amount, we'd have to make sure to have that money available for that.
And it actually is going to continue to go down. Our liability every year now goes down. And it has to do with the new PEPRA Reform Act. So we won't see this number like rising anymore. Does any new employee that we hire, theoretically, unless they've worked for another PERS agency, they should be under the PEPRA and, and their liability goes considerably down from old workers.
All right. We lost Cherie, but she does have the recording, so we did our best. So that brings us to our.
Yeah, yeah, and you can get rid of the download, Steve.
So that brings us to our next meeting date, which would be May 23rd at 3:00 PM.
May 23rd, 3:00 PM.
If that works for everybody, I will call for a motion to adjourn. And do we have to take a roll call on that one too?
We can.
Yes, you have to, yes.
All right. Anybody motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
All right.
My second.
Motion in a second, let's hear our final roll call of the day.
Member Miller. Secretary Halli.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gorance.
He's in a different time zone, he may not be ready yet to adjourn, I don't know. You, you're muted there, Mr. Gorance, if you'll give us your aye or nay on adjournment, we're ready to go.
Or a thumbs up at least.
Yeah, thumbs up will work.
All right, we'll take that as an aye. And aye, so we are adjourned, thank you.